Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders to spending certain provisions, the open meeting loans, general law chapter 38, section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order, enforcing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. All members of the school committee are here, as well as Assistant Superintendent and our Superintendent. But thank you, everybody, for joining tonight. As always, we're going to begin with public input, and public input is really for things that are not on the agenda. I know there might be some members of the public here that want to comment on some things that are on the agenda, and we will give adequate time at that time to have a comment. But does anybody want to talk about anything that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to the student report. I believe we have Gianna Melihu, Class 2022, here with the student report. Gianna?
Thank you, yes. So I'm going to start off with a little bit of a report on the return back into full in-person learning, which has been a huge shift that actually, our first day was yesterday, I think, pretty much for the entire building up top. So it overall has been going pretty well. The safety precautions that are currently in place are pretty much just a modified version of what was already in place, of course, keeping us safe. So the getting re-acclimated to safety things have been pretty well. Everyone has been closely following all guidelines that have been enforced in the building. And then also, the only thing that has been a little bit different for all of my fellow students and I has been getting readjusted to how many kids are actually in the building at once. You know, you almost forget because we are seeing a whole nother part of our school building that we haven't even seen, or our school, our student body that we haven't seen for over a year. So that was very strange. And coming back before break has definitely helped us get re-acclimated to our new and old acquaintances. So another thing is start times. I know that most of our, the prior meeting, Paris had done a little presentation with these student surveys, and overall, everyone, there's pretty much a majority leaning towards keeping the 8:30 start time, which has been working pretty well, lots of studies behind, you know, teens getting a lot of sleep. So, and then, in addition to that, the lunch and power block has been another big shift for, especially in the high school and middle school buildings, you're eating lunch somewhere different, your power block is somewhere different, and there's a new three-part schedule with three different lunches, and that has been also enforced these past two days and been going very well. Also, the SAT school day just happened on Tuesday, the day before we came back. That went very well. I actually participated in that. I took the SAT with the essay, if you were wondering, and it went great. And in terms of coming back into the school full-time, are, we're thankful to still continue in terms of our extracurriculars and sports. We are still continuing with those, the same safety guidelines, of course. So Drowsy Chaperone is the high school musical. They are still proceeding on a normal schedule. The, there will be variations of the, what we've seen in the past of the spring concert for chorus and band. Their senior night for football was actually last week, went very well. There's a track meet actually happening as we speak. And in terms of clubs, for DECA, the state conference was about, the state competition was actually like two weeks ago. We sent about nine students, they, who moved on there, two placed, Jack Donahue and myself. Jack Donahue will actually be moving on to the international conference, which is huge for, especially for a new DECA chapter. ECO Team is working with Andover to plant trees and correct Andover's carbon footprint because hopefully we choose to enforce this in the future here in North Reading, but right now we're helping out Andover. And StuCo attended the state conference formerly known as Hyannis. It was a virtual conference. Mr. Lepret actually got to 10 last year. You know how much fun it is in person, but it was moved virtually and overall went very well. And just to, my last thing here would have been student work, but today, instead, we're actually going to talk about a PSA project, which the newly formed club at the high school, the Social Activism Club, which was started by the Officers of the North Reading Youth for Anti-Racism. I think most of the officers are in this call, actually. Shivvi, Veronica, myself, and Lilly Joyce are actually officers, and I think Shivvi is going to give a little bit of a background on how we actually did this and what it was. And Mr., Dr. Daley is going to present the PSA project for you.
Yeah, totally. I can give a quick little background before we play it for you guys, but this is really exciting for us to win kind of the state-level competition centered around social activism in our first year of being a club, and so we wanted to thank you all again for kind of approving us to run this year. So our school is essentially registered as a part of the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, and we decided to submit a piece to the competition this year. So with help from Gianna, Veronica, and Lilly, who are our treasurer, vice president, and secretary respectively, we kind of filmed pieces of a script I was able to put together, and then with some help, I was also able to edit this video. So everyone kind of put a lot of time and effort into it, and Mr. Blum, who's also a football coach and our advisor, has a few plans on distributing the video. And right now, we're also helping mass partnerships kind of put together their press release on this win. So this competition is also annual, so we're hoping to keep this kind of as a regular event our club can do every year and submit a project to the PSA competition. And yeah, Mr. Daley, I can go ahead and play it for you now.
Okay. Sorry.
When we look injustice in the face, whether we be black, white, or brown, we have the choice of how to respond. Anger and frustration let the seeds of change. But everything you love regarding courage. We are students and we are here to learn and grow, to change the world. We go to school with the hope of finding ourselves, our passions, and our talents. But so few of us have the opportunity to do so. In 2011, only 57% of our Black peers, our fellow students, had access to advanced math and science classes in school. And nearly all have experienced and continue to experience the stemming bias of gender education. But students of color are not statistic. And we stand together with our leaders across the nation, whose diverse voices and lives have put them in the face of injustice. We share their sorrow, their anger, their frustration, and we share with them our love, our peace, and a promise to do better, to make change. Black students, Black students.
That was great. And as, as you shared there, and Mr. Blum, you know, spoke so highly, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he wanted to make sure that, you know, it was clear, Shivvi said, all student-directed, student-scripted, student-run, and they even sought out and applied for this. I mean, it's really just a, a great, you know, for a club that just started, you know, a matter of weeks ago, that they're already coming together with such a powerful message that's going to impact not just North Reading, but the entire state of Massachusetts. So we're very proud.
Excellent job. Gianna, I don't want to cut you off, but are you done with your report, or?
I am all done with my report, unless there are any questions.
Excellent. I mean, I'll just say, an excellent, excellent video. I mean, I just think the group overall, I mean, you know, we've been dealing with, we're talking with Shivvi and Veronica and some of the other members for over a year now, and so I think you've just been, you know, excellent in trying to help set the tone and educate people on these issues, and so very much appreciate everything. My, my questions would be, number one, and maybe I missed this part of it, but is this going to be shown somewhere? And then also, is there a prize for winning?
Um, I'm not necessarily sure if there's a prize. There isn't anything that we've been told about yet, but there's a press release, and then they distribute it to all the schools as a part of the Mass Partnerships for Youth. But yeah, thank you again for letting us show it to you and for approving us as a club, because I think winning this kind of competition is really important. Thank you again.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
It's all work. I think it was, like I said, Daley said, just to get this off the ground in a few weeks and put something together like that is impressive in and of itself, let alone, I think, a great message. And we're all, I'm incredibly proud of you. I think that's super, everybody's fantastic.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. So as always, you are welcome to stay as long as you would like, or you can cut out. We're going to, just to kind of give you an idea, we're going to start with an update, update on, you know, kind of everybody being back to school together, and then we're going to talk about when you guys are starting school next year. So you're welcome to stay as you'd like, or you can drop off. I'll turn it over to Dr. Daley to do the reopening, or the return in-person update.
Sure, thank you so much. So I think that the main story of the week is certainly that our middle school and high school students have returned back to full in-person this week. It was really a pleasure to see the, the students coming off the buses, to be in their classrooms all together. So much work went into preparing our schools, our administrative team at, at all levels have been working on this, working over the challenges with lunches and social distancing and maintaining all of the work. Mr. Lepret has patented his lap desk solution for the student lunch rotation for power block. I think he, it's been, you know, very creative work that he and his team have worked on. The students, you know, shared today, when, when I met with them for the, for preparing for tonight, just how, how excited they are to see. And I have some great, Mrs. Bray at the middle school collected from some of the peer leaders at the middle school, some of their thoughts about, about reopening. And it's just so wonderful to read, you know, students just saying some really terrific things that I'll share with you tonight. So I, I wanted to share a little bit also about our continued message around travel as we come into the break. I think it's very important.
Yes, can I just ask one question about reopening?
Sure.
Michael, Michael pointed out the buses were a little bit late and that bus 10 was, was not found. Did we ever find bus 10?
So there didn't happen, unfortunately, there was a couple of buses that ran late the first day. They were actually substitute driving on those buses, kind of that was a bad timing. And bus 10 was located, I think they just really turned around over by the detours up in North Street, Lowell Street area, and it just kind of compounded from there. That was unfamiliar with the route, so we definitely, you know, ran, that bus ran really late the first day. It was much better today, probably still about three or four minutes behind today, but it was, it certainly was, was better. So we've certainly been in conversations with the company where I think the drivers, the regular drivers should return after the school suspension meeting. I'm fairly confident they were much smoother and more on schedule at that point.
The series follow-up, the series follow-up was going to be about if they were, if it was better today, so.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to forget.
Well, that's great. Just a couple of little notes here I thought I'd share. What, these are from some middle school students. The first day was amazing. It was so nice to see my whole class. It was extremely fun. I was nervous at first, but everyone's excitement, especially the teachers, made me feel good. Thank you for putting all this work in to allow us to be somewhat in the whole school environment. I think today put a smile on everyone's face. And another one that really grabbed me, I just liked it. I kind of forgot teachers had to remind kids to be quiet, but when we were talked to, it took me back to a time pre-COVID that I didn't realize how much I missed. You know, I just, those were, those were a few of the thoughts that just really stuck with me. But, you know, we were out in the hallways, Mr. Clean and I had to direct a few students to classes. They hadn't been back in the building in a year. I didn't know where some of the rooms were. You know, that was something that he and I shared, and it was, it, it really just is amazing to think about what that must be like for students. So it felt like a first day of school, and someone said to me that we've had a bunch of first days of school this year. That's what it really feels like, because there are all these little pieces of, of different feelings throughout the year. But I think ultimately, I think I'm really happy with the plan and it hasn't gone. I think I've heard a lot of good feedback about getting some of these kinks worked out, buses, all those things in these few days before break, so when we come back after break, it's, it's going to be, going to be smooth. As I was just mentioning about travel, you know, I'm going to send a reminder tomorrow morning to everyone about travel over break. I think it's certainly a concern that we have about students returning back and staff returning back after travel, and so we are asking everyone to continue to follow the travel advisory, and that we will be asking for maybe a test result before students come back into school. And as I clarified, if a student needs to await a test result, they will be able to have access to remote learning in the classroom during that time. So for any COVID-related reason, including a travel quarantine than we're suggesting, there would be the opportunity for remote learning. And, and I think by and large, all of our parents understand and cooperate with that because they understand that our main goal here is to keep our students in person for as long as we possibly can, for as many days as we possibly can. And so we've certainly seen a continued numbers. This has not gone away. I think the message or the PSA or the information that we have to get out is, you know, as more people are becoming vaccinated and as the, you know, we're moving into phase four, we're not out of the woods yet, and we need to continue to remain vigilant with everything that we're doing. The students are fantastic, really. They're, when you talk about kids that are complying, wearing masks, even with all the numbers and seeing their friends for the first time, they're, they're really doing a great job, what we see with them every day. And so I think the same goes with the travel. I know that it's, it's, you know, a lot to, if you come back to get that test and take that extra step, even though there's an advisory now in the state, but we are, the Department of Education was very clear that we have the right as a school to impose an additional requirement to suggest that everyone get that test before they come back. And it really is just to make our schools safer. And so we, I'll be reminding folks again tomorrow, let your schools know, you know, if you are traveling, that way they can let the teachers know. Part of what we agreed to with our teachers group, who was fantastic through the negotiations, as were all our bargaining groups, just to have a 24-hour notice so that they, they're aware of the students that are not in that cohort D, but who would need to be remote. So I think that advance notice and the system we have should work very well. So I don't know if anyone had any comments or questions from the travel piece?
I don't have any comment from the travel piece. Just reopening, just I want to thank the principals who are all here today and the teachers and the staff that did so much to help get us back. And I know that the state is requiring something, but we are ahead of that schedule. Now, I don't even know if there is a deadline yet for the, for the high school, but, you know, very much appreciate the work. I know that it's been, you know, a lot of work, especially around lunches and trying to coordinate having everybody in the school, and so just really appreciate all the, all the work that's gone into it. So thank you. Anything?
I'm not quite sure how it was all facilitated here for the lunches, but I did pass a couple of schools, and I thought it was the cutest thing. They literally had tree stumps cut at like, you know, 18 inches, 20 inches, whatever, for them to sit outside, and I thought that was the cutest.
Yeah, we've talked about stubs, buckets, yoga mats. We've had so many different ideas. We've bought tents. I, I think it's important to point out what Michael Connelly did, as well as all of our administrators. When we had to spend, we were very thoughtful, and I think everything that we've invested in is something that has a purpose moving forward. I think that was something we all agreed to. I mean, so even you'll see as you came inside, the tables for the middle school, those are great useful tables that, that we'll be able to use and repurpose moving forward. So it's, it was something used for COVID, but it's not something that's, you know, money that we're going to say, what are we going to do with all this stuff when we're done? It's all going to be well-used and well-spent, but certainly provides us with that additional safety. You probably noticed that the cafeteria, we've set up additional cafeterias, Dr. O'Connell and this all that have done a great job scouting out that gymnasium location to have students safely there. I was in there this afternoon during lunches, and they're doing a fantastic job, everyone all around, so. Very good.
Any other topics on the, on the reopening? That's it.
This time, I believe that is all that I had for this topic.
Right. My only other question, I'll put it on the record here, just because I know this discussion's starting on this, for senior events, could you possibly give an update on what's been decided? I know there's still a lot to happen, but it's fair to start and reach out to me and my other members about prom, graduation, and I don't know where we're at in plans.
Sure. I will, Mr. Lepret is on the call, and I'll let him answer too. I just will stay in general to begin, this is something we've been proactive on this year, knowing how important it was every year, knowing what it was like last year. We found what worked best last year was working with the students and really hearing their voice and getting their input, also the parents, PTO, and the council. So Mr. Lepret, Mr. Hayne, and his, his team of adult advisors, working with the kids who are learning. Let me talk about a living civic action project, learning about all the, you know, for every event you want to have, there's requirements and guidelines and guidance that's come out. Yes, he has released guidance around graduation, and our plans are to have something very similar to last year. We feel that that was very successful, and we feel that something similar to what we did last year is within the guidelines for this year. So we're going to continue to meet with town officials, police chief, fire chief, board of health, town administrator, Department of Public Health nurse, to make sure that all of our plans are in accordance. But we have some other events that are, you know, either not able to happen in the same way, or that we've got guidance that they really shouldn't be happening. And so the kids, Mr. Lepret, are working to be very creative with some of those solutions. Mr. Lepret, I don't know if you want to specifically just mention a few of those ideas at this early stage?
Thank you, Dr. Daley. How's, how's the audio? Okay? I got my headphone on here. Thanks. So I think as, as Dr. Daley mentioned initially, the, kind of my primary goal is to make sure the students have the voice that they need to express what their interests are. The senior leadership of the class officers has, has just, and again, we're, you know, every time we have an experience like this, I say, boy, these kids are just fantastic. But it's, it's cultural, you know, it's a culture, part of the culture of the school, and I think we've seen another example of that this evening, that the, the student leadership piece, you know, it's just, it's such a pleasure to work with. And they, the seniors put together a survey to collect ideas around where the, where the students really want to express their energy and their interests, so we started working with that. They are aware of the restrictions and the guidelines that naturally are impacting them every day and that are, at times, I would say contradictory and, and difficult to navigate. So that's an added piece. But what I told them, and, and we have a, we have an appointment on the calendar to meet with Mr. Bracy and other town offices, but I told them to, you know, style a slate of events that you want, and then it's our job to get, to work together to try to see how close we can get to, to getting that as, you know, in as efficient and effective and as celebratory a manner. I will say that the commissioner did put out pretty explicit language to say that proms are, they're strongly recommending against proms. That's the, that's the commissioner's language around proms, and that alternative senior celebrations be pursued. So that's really where we are expending our energy in trying to craft an alternative senior celebration that will, I think, you know, fall in line with what they, with what they'd like, and that obviously can fall within the safety guidelines and regulations, that can be accessible to as many students as possible. And we are meeting tomorrow. They've been meeting, their, their class advisors have been very much involved, kind of guiding the process, but I really want, I want them to feel like, you know, not, not the sense kind of a, no, I never said sky's the limit, but, you know, kind of think about how you, what you want, and then we'll figure out how to get it for you and, or as close as we can. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Buckley.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you. Other questions on reopening again? Okay. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on to school start times and the school calendar. I think we have members of our school start time committee here. Dr. Daley, I don't know if you're going to lead this discussion, or if you have others that are going to lead this presentation?
Sure. I was just going to start it off. As, as you're aware, we've had some parent forums, we've had teacher forums, staff forums, we've shared out some surveys, so we just have a few spots tonight to share with you. And then if there's additional questions, we could do with more, but I was thinking, similar to some other events, I wouldn't do the full PowerPoint, seeing that many of us have already participated. Is that okay?
Good with me.
All right. So I, I want to start, obviously, by thanking, our start times committee has been meeting since 2018, December 2018, this particular group. The, the group actually began back in 2016, and then, you know, this official group started in December of 2018, and in addition to myself, at that time, as assistant superintendent, Alyssa Fishman as a parent representative, Mr. Clean at the time as a principal, and now as assistant superintendent, Rich McGowan as a school committee representative, David Miller as a parent, Samantha Miller as a parent, Nicole Pierce as a teacher and REA representative, but also wearing the parent hat as well, Carrie Reddington as a parent, Sheila Sutherman as a parent, and Debbie Shaw as a parent. We really appreciate all the time and effort and thought that went into the work on this committee. I did send out a survey most recently with different choices, and this was after the, the information was shared at the forum. This graph may be a little challenging to understand, but apparently, you know, we wanted to give people the ability to rank, order different choices, and so the blue would represent the first choice, the red would represent the second choice, the orange, the third, the three, and the fourth. So I think when you're looking at this, if you're looking at a combination of the blue and the red, I think you can see people's first and second choices are certainly the two in the middle. And one of the reasons why I think time B may have been slightly behind time C is because when presented last Tuesday before the, the survey was sent out, option B made it inconvenient to many riders of the bus. There was about 200 or so students we felt might not be able to continue to be offered bus ridership if we were to do the staggered middle school, high school start time. And so following that and talking more with our teachers and hearing more from parents and really through some additional forums, we kept hearing that middle school, we would hope that middle school could end a little bit earlier, and yet at the same time, we didn't want to have that, that issue with, with the ridership. And so, Michael.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but can you remind me what B and C were?
Yep. I will, I'm sorry about that. So B would be eight o'clock, both of them are eight o'clock start times for the elementary schools. B would be both middle and high school, 8:30 to 2:30, and C was high school, we had said 8:25 to 2:45, I'm sorry, 2:55, and then middle school went until about 3:11.
So B is the one where they're together?
B is the one where they're together, yeah. So essentially.
So B was the one that also in, in the presentation mentioned that there'd be a couple hundred kids that would.
Not having.
Which we're going to talk about.
Okay.
And A, just for people, and A was the option of?
I can, I can put them up. I have it all.
I just wanted to make sure I knew what else was there.
Yep.
I remember I was between B and C, but I went through.
So this is, this is B?
Got it.
And then this is C.
And what was, what was A?
A was what we originally put out there, which is similar to this year, 8:00 and 8:30, and it got out in 3:26. So I think that was less popular. And then B was quite popular, but one of the concerns that a lot of people noted in the qualitative responses was they liked B, but they didn't like that students would have to miss on the bus. And so C was this option here, which was slightly preferred, but what I heard after this at several meetings was that people preferred B if there was a way that we could do it. So really, what, what we went, Michael Connelly went back to the drawing board, he and I spoke. He called the bus company about what would the possibility be of adding additional buses. So what we're recommending tonight is to go with start time B, which would allow all this, but with the addition to our budget of two additional buses. Now, we, and as I said in the presentation, we can't, we can't change everything with just additional buses. Two buses isn't going to change everything, but it would allow for those 200 or so students that we thought might be not able to take the bus to continue. And then the more we thought of. And then the more we thought about it, we said, this would also be two additional buses to help us with elementary because we're bringing all three start times together, which is going to present its own logistical challenges. It's got many, many benefits, but there will be some challenges. And then the third thing that that should likely allow us is to have a, a late bus for middle school and high school, which is something we've wanted for many years and have not had. So because we only have two start times now, you know, just to say to the company that, you know, we might want to make another run later in the day. Now, that run probably, it wouldn't be every bus running, but we probably have one bus going one direction, one going the other. But it would allow students to get very close to their homes, maybe not as close as the traditional bus, but it would drop them off along the way. But that would allow so many students who right now aren't able to stay for extra help or for some clubs or activities because they don't have transportation. For years since I was a middle school assistant principal, we've said, we're, you know, how can we get a late bus? And this is a possibility through this law. So you'll see when we get to the budget piece that this was another challenge. It certainly is something that threw a little bit of a wrench into some of that planning, but we felt that it was worth including. We certainly have a lot of, spent a lot of time and support for the science behind the eight thirty AM starts and preserving those for, for high school. The science that we're, we're following, saying that, you know, not starting high school before eight thirty AM. And so we do want to preserve that and we also want to keep the elementary times at eight. So some of the feedback that we received was, well, can you just start high school at eight fifteen? You can't really do that without then starting elementary at seven forty-five, which was another piece we heard a lot of feedback was too early. And don't forget, that's what the start times is. They would have to be getting on the buses then even earlier. So we, we really tried to preserve the eight thirty start time for high school, preserve that eight AM start time for elementary. The aligned start times allow for more vertical collaboration, for more activities, the professional development for teachers, all being at the same time. There's just, there's a lot of opportunities built into that, that combination of schedules. And those additional buses will be able to support all of us. So like I said, there'll be some, you know, with any change, there's going to be some challenges to busing and having additional buses for all levels is going to be helpful. The concerns, I think, are, are clear, right? We, we're still talking about challenges with that three PM dismissal time. It's an hour later for high school. So we're used to getting out at two. We're now going to have to get out at three. There's going to be some changes and some adjustments. When I talk to other towns, such as the Middlesex League that's been through this, the, all the administrators I've spoke with, you know, I, I said, this is your chance. Tell me, like, should we, should we be avoiding this? What should we be afraid of? They're all saying we worked through those challenges. Not that everything's perfect, but that it's, some of them said, you know, Winchester, this is the best thing we ever did. No regrets. We love it. Kids are healthier, happier. I mean, those are the things we're hearing over and over. And they all have sports, they all have all those same challenges in their, in their districts as well. And I think this is a, a really positive thing for our community. But I think those concerns are valid and I heard them certainly from our coaches. I heard them from some parents and from some teachers. And I think those are challenges that we're, as a team, going to continue to work through. So I was asked, you know, will this committee continue to meet and work? And I think we, obviously, an approval of a start time change is a major hurdle in this process. But I think the education of our community moving forward is equally as important. I think we need to continue to inform parents about how important it is to make sure the kids now that are getting the later start times are getting to sleep and sleeping later and not going to bed with their screens and not staying up to three AM playing video games and eating healthy and all the other components of a healthy lifestyle. But this certainly, I think with all of us, a foundation of a good night's sleep sets us up for so many other successes in our day emotionally, mentally, healthy, and academically. And so there's certainly the cost of the, the busing. The middle school and high school would be sharing buses, you know, we can talk about that tonight. But I think the idea of having two buses coming to the same street for siblings, the high school and the, and the middle school sibling, to have two buses coming to that same area doesn't make as much sense. It's much more efficient if we have the buses, you know, be strategically deployed and sharing middle school and high school students. But we realize that there's going to be some concern around there. And so one thing that we'll be doing, similar to what we do at elementary school, middle school students, sixth graders closer to the front, and we have that going back on the bus as well. And certainly messaging to parents and supports around the shared busing. And I did hear a lot of concern about that particular issue through any of the surveys we put out there. I think that's something that, I think, you know, people have asked. Our ridership, just to be clear too, it's not, a lot of the students and seniors aren't taking the bus. There are some, but a lot of them are driving. So it's a lot of ninth and 10th graders, it's a lot of siblings, a lot of older brothers and sisters that are, that are riding the buses together. So I think we can certainly work through those challenges. And I think to, to be honest, we did here and we are aware, there will be some drop off, pickup. I think any of you that were up here on day one, you see there's, you know, with any kind of a change to a schedule, especially in the first few weeks or so, there's, you know, some, some hiccups along the road. And I think with all of the students coming at the same time and leaving at the same time, there'll be some challenges. But we're already brainstorming ways to be more efficient and to do that well. So I think that's, again, a challenge that we certainly feel is, is worth working on for the benefits that our students will see. And so that, that is our proposal at this time would be, and what I've included in the package is the calendar, which has the, the finalized start time proposal of eight thirty to three for high school and middle school and eight to two fifteen for the elementary schools. So I wanted at this moment to just give an opportunity for anyone on the committee, Mr. Colleen or Mr. Connolly or Mr. McGowan or any of our, our, our parents, Miss Pierce, to share because they did such a wonderful job over, over the time of this committee.
But any, if anybody would like to speak, you can type your name or something in the, in the chat site. We'll, we'll open it up to first the people that are on the start, start time, start time committee. Then the school committee will ask some questions and then anybody from the public who, that wants to ask questions, we will take those questions as well. Mr. McGowan, I get it. Go ahead.
I'll get started. And I just want to reiterate thanks for the folks who've been on the committee, who's, who did spend quite a bit of time meeting over the last two and a half years. Thanks to Dr. Daly, who's, who's been passionate about this since, since we started. I know when I came on the committee, it was something that was kind of on my radar. So I was really glad to have an opportunity to participate in this process. And I, I think we really did our, our research and explored what had been happening in other communities. We did a lot of, you know, looking at some of the studies and some of the information out there. And I became personally more and more convinced that this was the right thing to do for kids and that the challenges were things that we could overcome. So I think we're on the right path and I hope that we can get support in it. Thanks.
Do they also have any comments from the committee, the start time committee? Any questions from the school committee? Diana? Jenny, go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure. You had mentioned, like, where Chester said that everything's going great and it's the best thing they ever did. And I know when we were originally looking at it, that we were concerned that if we started, that the other people in the K family, you know, say needed to follow and all that kind of stuff. So are we good with that? And are the other ones, and I apologize if this is redundant, but are they like following suit type sort of thing?
When I've talked with the K family, we are definitely in a place, you know, if someone's not in the middle of doing this right now, they're not going to start it in the pandemic. And I don't think we would have either. We were already in process since 2018. I sort of got the thumbs up, great job, feedback from a lot of people in the K family and others saying, how are you doing this? We want to learn. And then other districts like Newburyport have done this first. So Newburyport was sort of the first in our group. Others have been looking at it and exploring it and there's still an interest. So I, I think now the conversation becomes a lot of, what are our next steps as a group? And so one of the major things is with the athletics. So I know that, that Mr. Johnson, as the athletic director, as we were talking about this today, about, you know, starting to talk about those times for setting some of the events for the fall and for the, for next year. And starting to let them know now that, that we're going to be in this position. But he's already, because we did it this year, they're already aware of some of that with what we've done this year. So that, it's already laid out and that's really how it happened in the Middlesex League is some districts went first and then as a league, they came together and said, we're going to support with the, with the times and we're going to support those that did it because there was an overall commitment to it. And then it actually made it easier, I think, for other districts, the, the second tier to sort of make the change because it, a lot of those concerns are different because it's like they're already waiting now for these other schools that have made the change. So we're, we're a bit of the pioneers in this league. We're at the, at the, at the league. And I, I did, I have to say, we received a lot of feedback saying that too and thanking us for, for taking the lead, you know, from our group. So.
And I think there's two factors that really allowed us to do that. And one is the fact that we've been doing that on that time, you know, working on this since 2018. And then of course, the fact that we essentially had a pilot this past year with the, with the necessary changes to adjust for COVID. So it was kind of a perfect storm for us because we had done a lot of work leading up.
Absolutely. And as I said in the forum, I put piloting quotes. I agree. In some ways, it gave us a lot of data. In other ways, I'm not studying the absentee rates or things from this year because there's so many variables, right? But certainly that's the data we're going to be looking at closely next year. So there is a question from the community about the bus fees. Will it remain the same? So Connolly, I don't know if you want to address that or?
Yeah, there is no proposal or plan in, from next year to make an adjustment to the bus user fee. So we'll be presenting during the, the budget hearing today, the plan to add that cost to the budget and inform them about the impact of doing that and what that means to the, the budget requirements. But there is no plan at the moment to make any recommendations to increase the bus user fee for next year.
The, the only comment that I'll add, add on the buses is this year decimated the bus reserve fund revolving account. And I don't know what ridership is going to be next year. And so it is something that I think the committee needs to take a very careful, keep a, keep an eye on. I mean, as Mr. Connolly said, for this budget year, there's not a, there's not a fee increase proposed. But I'm very concerned about what the ridership will be next year. And so I think that is something that the, the school committee really have to take a hard look at next year. And I, but I would, but I would also encourage a lot of people, like drop off is going to be a pain next year. And so if you have middle and high school kids, use the buses that we have because it's going to be hard. So this is that. What? You got a question or a comment for?
Yeah, I'll start with my question. I just touched upon it because I directly experienced it, right? And so when we opened up the schools this week, and I know it's probably because it's two, but it's, the drop off lines are long. And I, I think that that's totally reasonable. And I was thinking, is there any way, or have you talked about any of the ideas to try? When I think about how it is with just the middle school right now, adding the high school to that at the same time? And knowing that we don't know what type of environment we're going to be in in the fall, if people are going to, going to want to pick up their kids versus putting them on the bus? And is there a way to manage the traffic flow in different ways? Has, has that been considered? Because that would be my biggest concern is that, you know, the people at the end of the line, they were almost back to the bottom lot. And that's, that's a lot of time for people to take out of their day picking up their kids. So I was just curious if there's creative ideas that you guys have kind of thrown up in the air thus far that you could share.
Yeah. And actually, before you ask it, I just want to piggyback on one other thing. And if there's a way to even consider like a carpooling lane of any sort, just to encourage people and maybe even give them a shorter line if people were in a carpool with multiple families, just to kind of do it. But yeah, has it been discussed on that?
So I, I would, I, I will say I haven't heard of a carpool lane at this time. I, I will, you know, I will say, and then if, if either principal wants to jump in, but I have spoken with Mr. Lepred, this Dr. O'Connell, as recently as this morning about ideas. And there's, you know, they were so heavily involved in the design of the flow of traffic, the improvement to the flow of traffic through the building of this property. There were, there were some ideas that we went with, there were some ideas that we didn't go with. So there's some ideas that are still in the back burner that, that could come into play. I, I don't want to derail it too much by throwing those out there because we have to test them out and walk through them. But there's different patterns that you can use around, you know, think of our car parades and things that we were able to do that, that streamline traffic. And, and there's other things we can do to stagger things a little bit internally with student drivers coming and going. That's what slows it down sometimes too, is people parking while others are coming up. You know, right?
See those people trying to come out too, because I get there early enough where high school's still coming out.
Yeah.
Just because I don't, I can't wait in the line. So they're like trying to get out and you just see a car sitting there for so long. And I'm thinking, if it all was at one time, what a conundrum that would be. I mean, in, in the perfect world, right, you'd be able to pilot it and see what it would look like, but that, you know, is not practical here. But, you know, it, it's certainly going to be a challenge. I, I hope there'll be some creative options around it. That would, that was, was my biggest concern is them kind of all coming out at the same time. I'm not really worried about the busing and them being together on the bus. I love the idea of having a late bus. So to your point, the value of that. And, you know, if there's any folks out there listening right now that maybe weren't in favor of the later start time, I have to say, when the committee was formed, I was someone that questioned and said, you know, I understand there's science out there and I get it, but we all survive. So why do we really need to do this? Why do we need to move things around? And if you're, if you have that mindset, I could just say to you that having a middle schooler start late, I have seen a dramatic increase in his engagement and being ready for engagement at the time he comes in. And it made me take a complete three six feet because I experienced it myself. So if anybody, if that resonates with you at all, I can tell you that my individual experience is that starting later in engagement and just productivity, it, it's real. So hopefully that will help anyone that has that same concern.
That was great. I appreciate that.
Yeah. So with the combining of the, the middle and high school kids on the return buses, I presume that we're going to extend the length of the bus round trip? Now, given the pickup time, maybe a kid is on for a certain number of minutes before they get to school and I expect it's going to be longer now in general?
Not sure of that. But, no, I mean, in general, the routes will be more ridership on the routes with this, with the design and what we're going to do. So the routes, and we've kind of rezoned the, the areas to move the twelve busing and to consolidate the run. So hard. It is, we are estimating that the routes are going to be a little bit longer than they typically have been. We, just because the tier is now going from four tiers to, the tiers are a little bit longer in, you know, spread apart. So suppose we're trying to do four tiers in less than 20 minutes, we're not trying to do two tiers, maybe about 35 minutes to pull off the tier in terms of, of the busing. So we're going to be mindful and try to even out the ridership based on when the numbers come in. Ridership is going to drive a lot of it. And I will say a lot of, some of our predictions of the 12 buses and that requirement goes from 10 to 12, the elementary and secondary levels really is based on the, the interest that we received through the survey of families that said they would definitely want, want ridership and we looked at that. And we didn't, we did also project sort of an increase above the survey that, you know, anticipating families over the summer would decide they might want to return and, and, and for, for busing as well. So, so I think it's fair to say it's going to be a little longer. And that's what allows us, is allowing us to kind of consolidate the tiering. But we're not, there's no plan to kind of have a definitely long run, but it's, it's going to be longer than your, your 15 to 20 minute run that will be made in a normal, in a normal year. This year was really normal with the less ridership.
Yeah, you can't count for sure.
Rather even a little bit faster than normal, but it's going to be a little bit longer.
Okay. I mean, I think, yeah, and I expect that and I think it's necessary, right? But, and obviously, you know, we're not going to have the real understanding of exactly what it would be like until we know who's going to be on what bus and, and all that late in the process. But I was just curious in terms of a function, the longer bus ride takes a little bit of, of how much later we're starting. If that's one, just have to get up and get ready. You know, they don't have to be on to learn, but nevertheless, they're kind of like getting their day started. So if it's a matter of 10, 15 minutes longer, that's one thing, but a 35, 45, you know, that becomes a challenge. So I just wanted to kind of point that out and it seems like we're not, we'll be in a very comfortable range then.
We're pretty confident they'll be able to sleep about an hour late, you know, no matter what. Because it's, it's not going to have that much more for most of the rest of the year.
I think on the bus.
I mean, in the year 2019, 2020, we, we had, the buses were actually were picking up high school students at six fifty-five on the county. That was a pretty typical first pickup. And the students, some of the students would be dropped out by seventeen, as early as seventeen fifteen. And that was almost necessary to keep the next tier through a very short window on schedule. So that would not be the case. It would be, at least it would be a four hour later than that. Yeah, we're going to four hour later than that at first start time.
All right, thank you.
So I, I, my thoughts, I don't really have any questions. And I think my thoughts are, thinking through this systematically, and, and I think in 2016, we talked about. And I think my thoughts are, thinking through this systematically, and I think in 2016, we talked about this, 2018, it came up. I think the first question was, does the science support it? And I think this committee, the start committee, start time committee has come to the school committee before. I think everybody early on, or most people early on, sort of bought into at least there being some merit to the idea. But to me, the bigger question was, do the challenges outweigh the potential benefits? This year has given us the unique opportunity to see some of the benefits in action. And we saw a lot of conversations about what the challenges were and how to minimize them, whether it's daycare, and, you know, we've looked into that, whether it's, you know, teaching contracts, whether it's bus contracts. And a lot of work has been done by the administration, by the start time committee to kind of look at that. To me, I'm kind of convinced, the only thing that's still out there is which is the best plan. And so I think whatever we decide here, I think, you know, for me personally, I think it's worth doing this. The only question is, is this the right plan or not? I think it is, but there's a lot of, I can make a lot of arguments with some of the other plans versus this other one. You know, I think with, you know, at a budget, at our budget workshop, we started talking about this a little bit. I think Mr. McCallum made an excellent point that, you know, we're spending $130,000 extra on two buses here. And that saves, you know, one school getting off 20 minutes later. And is $130,000 spent there worth 20 minutes, you know, to get everybody out at the same time so nobody has to get out after 3 o'clock? My answer is, I don't know. I mean, $130,000 could go to other things and, you know, go there. I think that, you know, the drop off pickup is a really big concern of mine. So I think we can try that part of it. But I just hope the community understands that even if there are challenges with drop off and pickup, that that doesn't mean that later start times doesn't work. I think we're trying to find what the right plan is. But the way I think about this is, the science supports it. It's it's the challenges are worth it, even though there are still going to be some challenges. And we'll still have to tinker on the actual plan, but it's worth doing it. That's kind of where I'm where I'm at right now. I want to also open it up that if there are members of the public that want to talk or type in questions?
I look at it, Ms. Sharp has typed in that she said, this plan is supported by science, change is hard. All we can do is keep educating our community in the best interest of our kids. She was a valuable member of our start times committee.
And at the end of the day, the start time committee is suggesting this, the administration is suggesting this, the administration has spoken with the teachers' union, they've looked at the bus schedules, they've talked to the coaches. Again, I don't think everything's unanimous on this. They've done parent calls, they've done student calls. We've done what we could do. I mean, and, you know, at this point in time, I think we have to try something and see what happens. And the reality is, we tried it this year and we saw some of the benefits. And that's my thoughts on this. And so what are we voting on specifically, accepting the academic calendar again, or do you want a separate vote on?
I think it would be, I'm just putting the calendar out there just as a way to present the times. But I think it's a vote to accept the changes to the start.
Can I ask another?
Yes, of course.
Because I am in complete agreement with you. It's more, it's not about the late start time. I think we're all kind of there, sort of which plan is the best. And I know this one's being proposed, and to your point, the cost for the busing. With the other scenario that was high, I think it puts middle school a little later.
Yep.
Was there a cost impact there at all from a busing perspective?
The plan of 311 or the?
Yeah, I think it was the three, where it's a little bit later for middle.
Plan C, Plan C was still about 10 buses, right?
Not what we're, not what was proposed in the calendar, but.
So Plan C also was likely because the the window between the high school and the middle school tier was so short. It was going to have an impact on the bus service, potentially not cost, but it could potentially be a situation where we would have had to have limited ridership at some point. And it also would have potentially caused middle school students to have to wait and it's got to take time potentially after the course of the day for for busing.
Because they would do the high school and have to come back, right?
Correct, yeah. Right, so it's a, it was a 311, but it might effectively be 320 or something.
Got it, got it. So they'd be sitting there potentially waiting.
For the moment where.
Yeah, nobody wants that.
Supervision for all those things.
No one wants that, yeah.
When we started hearing some of those things, we said, what's it going to take to get to get us to B? And that's why we really, that's why that's the model we're presenting today, yeah.
I wouldn't want to do that. I wouldn't want my kids sitting around waiting for a bus either, you know.
And then, yeah, it didn't benefit of the of the late ones.
Yeah.
Although I suppose now that they're switched, you could, you're going to go late buses anyway, but.
You could have altered C and made it made it a little bit later, but then, again, and you're running into coaches and teachers and, you know, the concerns leaving at 320. But again, it ultimately is our decision what to try, you know? I mean, is it worth $130,000 to get everybody at 3 o'clock? And I think one thing that I asked when I was talking to Dr. Daley about this one time, and he said, you know, we want to really make sure that we don't sink the whole idea over, you know, some technicalities of it. And again, I think the I think the busing will work fine. I think the pickup drop off is what, to me, the two challenges are pickup drop off is challenge number one, two, and three. And challenge number four is the $130,000, you know? And in the future, could we maybe say the pickup drop off is too much of a pain that has to be staggered? Maybe we would, you know? And I would say that I would reserve the right to go back on that one if 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 after a couple, after a year or whatever, this just isn't working. You know, I think that's the one thing we have to really think about. And then, you know, we can save some money in other budget years. But I'm in support, again, I think we appointed a start time committee, and we hire our superintendent and assistant superintendent to give us advice and to do all that legwork. And so generally speaking, I think we should support the leaders and the subcommittees that we asked to do this work. And I personally see no big reason not to do that.
Okay, I just want to note on the drop off line, I, I, the ridership this year is very low on the bus, about 65% of what it typically is. So we are anticipating that that's going to go, just survey data, just that that's going to go up. Maybe not back to what it was, but we are anticipating an increase. So I think that might help the office of just, you know, these last two days, seeing the longer line. And we're guessing there might be 100 more, probably more than that, students riding riding the bus than there is this year, which could be, you know, 75 hours of company satisfaction.
And this this is already basically show that we should say who we are, that's Michael Connelly, Diana?
I think our names are all on the screen.
Because she can't, I don't think they can say who's, they can't see who's talking when they're, we're only using one microphone.
Okay.
Um, you know, it would be a no brainer, you know, when kind of like what I'm used to when you put forward sort of a place that's like a business case, right? It's it's very much so where if there's a challenge, you kind of have the plan to mitigate that challenge or how to address that challenge. And so that drop off pickup, like, that's why I asked about those details, because that's like the one gap for me. Like, if it was like, oh, we're going to address that here, and this is why you should approve it, because we have a plan to address the challenges. That's the part where I get a little hung up, because I wish that was all packaged together. But that's just, you know, the way I look at things. But at the end of the day, I'm also willing to take a risk, too. It's not something where we can't come back as a committee in a year from now and say, oh, my goodness, we need to adjust. So certainly willing to take a risk for the value that we have.
And I would just offer even even shorter term, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change things after day one. Obviously, those first few days, we have to, we have to work through the first few weeks, first few months. But this recommendation is to try to minimize the concerns that we heard in our in our listening tour, right? I heard it from teachers, from parents about the lateness of the middle school. We heard, we haven't really mentioned about childcare before after school. I think I covered that in our presentation. We've come up with ways to address that. I think we're trying to do that, but if we find out that there's other issues now that are arising, then we might have to say, listen, we tried this, but we have to now try something else. But I think this model right now is going to try to address most people's concerns. And and I'll be honest, I've heard from a lot of people that, you know, were originally, you know, not in favor of changing, but appreciate very much that we're hearing their concerns and at least trying to mitigate some of those supports. And I'm hearing from a lot of people that are that are thrilled with what we're doing, so.
And this is Scott again, I'll just, I'll also point out, I mean, the sweet spot is between 8:00 and 8:30. The problem is, you can only do two runs in between 8:00 and 8:30, you know? And so either you have to start earlier, or you have to start later, or both. And I will say, I think there are some advantages, especially at the elementary school. I think there's some advantages of all three starting at the same time, and the two extra buses having a lot of benefit there, you know? So it's really valuable, we've heard about that. I think even for secondary, if there could be, you know, some shared usage of staff, I mean, there's some value to it being at the same time. And, you know, and we're talking about the end time, but I don't think anybody disputes that, you know, not having to have parents every two years change their schedules around because of the drop off time, you know, changing. I think there's a lot of advantages on the early end, which is one of the other reasons why, you know, I also have a middle school, but I also have elementary students. And, you know, I see the benefit on the early end, too. So, yeah, that's that's kind of where I'm at. Doesn't seem like there's many other comments, and so is there any other discussion, any other thoughts, concerns? I hear none. I will entertain a motion to accept the school start time for next year as 8:00 AM for elementary going to 2:15. And high school, middle school beginning at 8:30 and ending at 3:00.
I will make that motion to adopt the start times for the next school year.
Five seconds, this is Chris.
Chris made the motion, any discussion?
I was just going to ask Mr. Daley to put the recommended start times back on the screen so that everyone can see it. Because right now, it states something different than what's being proposed, or you know? Thank you, that's okay.
Any other discussion? So we'll take the vote. Mr. McGowan.
Hi.
Mr. Papa Lucilio.
Hi.
This is Bowwell.
Hi.
This is Embriano.
Hi.
I'm an I as well, chair, so we are unanimous, five to zero. Thank you to the school start time, thank you to Dr. Daley, Mr. Connelly, Mr. Colleen. And, you know, and I do think, just to point out, I do think we should keep the school start time grouped together for another year to evaluate the problems and hopefully solutions without throwing the whole thing out. Because I think there needs to be some adjustments, there will need to be some adjustments. And so I would really recommend that there be, you know, some meetings early on in the school year when it starts, just and obviously some planning in advance of that. Because I think there will be some challenges.
Sure.
So, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, moving on, we, we're going to have a principal for bachelor's, Mr. Lee, you're not going back? Are you keeping this position?
Speaking of long lines of traffic.
Without without proper drawing, right? Dr. Daley, I'll turn it over to you, actually. Were you going to start with something else you wanted to do this?
I was going to do this and then.
Okay, go ahead.
So again, to thank the the committee that worked on this, we had a committee with teachers, parent professionals, our school administrative assistant, several parents, member of the CPAC. We had quite an administrators at the district level and the school level, principals and myself came together. We we interviewed for the interim position, and then we came back again, did a full search for for the spring. Obviously, Ms. Bowwell also is a school committee member, was a part of this group, and is apparently two hats. We really looked at over 21 candidates for this position and got it down to three very qualified finalists that we interviewed. They were representative of the other two candidates, in addition to Mr. Maloney, who is the interim principal. One was a current assistant principal at an elementary school, and the other was a long term principal at an elementary school. So we really had very thorough search, but the committee unanimously felt that Mr. Maloney was the best choice. He's done a wonderful job. I received many emails and letters in support of the great work that he's done in that role. And he certainly was was very thorough in his interview as well. And so tonight, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Michael Maloney would be the permanent principal at the LV Bachelor's School.
Congratulations, Mr. Maloney.
Yeah.
He's on the call this night, so I will be sharing that out with the whole community tomorrow. But he's he's really made a great impact in his short time there. And I'm very excited for the continued work that he'll be able to do with us, both at the school and as a part of our leadership team. So thank you very much to Ms. Bowwell and everyone who's on that committee for their time and great efforts.
Do you want to stop sharing, just so I can speak on here?
Oh, sure. We're we're for our thought and for Maloney.
Maloney, would you like to say?
There we are. Congratulations, Mr. Maloney. Well, we don't get a vote on this, right, or are we?
No, we don't approve of that.
Scott, I mean, you have a position.
We don't approve of that.
I'd just like to say thank you very much to Dr. Daley and to the the interview team, and especially the administrative team across the district. And specifically Glenn and Chris, for your support over the past four and a half months. You've you've made my transition, Mr. Colleen, to the elementary level pretty seamless. The community has been very welcoming, the the parents, the faculty and staff, everybody, especially the students. I mentioned in my interview that, you know, I have a sore neck at the end of the day because it's hi, Mr. Maloney, hi, Mr. Maloney, with with big smiles every day. And it's it's really, you know, refreshing, and I'm very excited to continue my work in North Reading. I've spent quite a quite a long time in the district now, and I've enjoyed every second of it. And I owe a lot of that, all of it, to to a lot of the people on this call, you know, present parents, former parents, colleagues, Dr. O'Connell. You know, I've learned a lot from Dr. O'Connell, and I really appreciate her her guidance and and support. And I wouldn't be here without without her help and and a lot of people on this call. So thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity, and and I'll continue to work my hardest for for North Reading and specifically now the students of the Bachelor's School. Thank you.
That's fun.
Thank you. Great. If I could just out of order, just do two quick administrative updates. Mr. Ruffler?
Yes, go ahead.
Sure, this is Dr. Daley. So the, Mr. Maloney shared with me that we had some students who won the Cambridge Science Festival 2021 Curiosity Challenge. So we had several students entered this challenge. It was a parent that brought this to our attention, and we entered, this was through MIT. And the students are Charlotte McGentee, Tanya Dorakina, and Riley Borkowski. So those three students won awards to this competition. So we're very excited for them, and we might have them come and present with us in the future to share a little bit more. But I wanted to share that tonight. And I also wanted to share, which I think many of us are aware, that Mr. Lopretz, who's on this call, was named a very prestigious Administrator of the Year Award from the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. And I think that's just, it was a great honor, it was a surprise. We got to surprise him, and it was always like a typical surprise party. We had to distract him and keep him down one end of the building while we tried to do something at the other end, but we had a very nice ceremony. His wife and best friend were able to be there, Mr. Bernard was able to come, all socially distanced. We stuck people in from the outside, right into the auxiliary gym. And it was Mr. Hane did a fantastic job along with Miss St. Arnaud. And really, the students are the ones who nominated him. And when you hear what the students were able to say about him, and just his leadership and his dedication to student council, being there, even, I believe during the pandemic, Mr. Lopretz, going down and supporting the students at the student council. It really is quite a, quite an honor. So I know that all of you are aware, and I wanted to make sure that we took a moment to recognize him tonight.
Congratulations to Phil Lopretz.
Thank you very much, yeah, it was it was quite a surprise. I didn't realize that engineering a global pandemic was part of the distraction. Well done. No, thank you, it was, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an amazing award, it's an amazing feeling. I think, you know, even just hearing Mike say a couple of minutes ago that, you know, you're in this position where you have students that reach out to you and welcome you in the morning and welcome you throughout your day. And he's kind of saying, you know, his neck is sore from the end of the day. That's that's very much my experience at the high school, and I wouldn't give it up for anything. And I'm very, very honored to to have this recognition, and I very, very appreciate your support, so thank you.
Congratulations. I think I think you made it on every page of the transcript with a photo as well. I would say, I would just say, I mean, it's amazing the leaders that we have in this community. And, you know, the principals that are here right now, the administrators that are here, it's been a really challenging year, and so you guys have all done a great job. It's always nice when other district students also, you know, recognize some of our leaders, you know, like this award. And so just congratulations to AJ and to everybody else here. And so, just congratulations to AJ and to everybody else here. We are very appreciative. You've made our job a lot easier. Everybody said, when I ran last year, they're like, oh, my God, you want to run for this again? I'm like, yeah, we got great leaders and they're going to do all the hard work. So, it's been great.
Patrick, it's students nominated, not peers? It's all students nominated?
Mr. LaPret, it's all student nominated, correct? I just want to make sure I have that correct.
It is, it is a, so it's the MAS, it's the Mass Association of Student Council. So, it is the students that nominate the, their respective administrators, yes.
No, fantastic. Probably even means more if it comes from.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, wholeheartedly.
And I think you were honestly surprised, if I'm not mistaken. I think you really came into that room and it was, it was just such a great honor and a surprise. We had representatives from the association there, student representatives around the state who, who just could recognize from what they read in the nomination papers just how lucky the North Reading High School students are to have, to have Mr. LaPret as a leader. So, I feel that way as well. So, thank you so much for everything you do every day, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations. Sorry to interrupt, Dr. Daly or Mr. Buckley. Can I just go back to the Cambridge Science Festival Awards?
Absolutely.
And just mention three names. I had three winners as well.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Well, I haven't submitted it yet just because it was, anyway, the timing of it. But I have Dean McAdams in Mrs. Cleary's class. I have Trish Goell in Mrs. Cleary and Mrs. Lawton's class. And I have Parker Burnham in Mrs. Gorman's class.
Good.
So, congratulations to those students. They haven't been notified yet, but I'm sure they'll hear and I'll get them a call. Congratulations to Mr. Maloney and Mr. LaPret. Well done. It's great to work with both of you.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll try, and I don't know whether I, maybe I spoiled them with the names, too. So, we can try to, just try to get everyone together. But we can have them, the students join us at the next meeting. I just wanted to share the good news and then we could definitely have them on to recognize them. I think that'd be really nice.
I love sharing good news, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Molly, we're looking at you now.
You might, Mrs. Molly, you might have some in your email. It came across in an email that we didn't notice.
Yeah, it just came out. That was pretty recent, next week, I believe, when we were notified.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. That's not, and we'll follow up that good news with a budget hearing now. So, do you have anything before the budget? We, I know we have to actually officially open this, but do you have anything before we go to the budget hearing? Okay, so I think you need a motion to open the 2020, 2022 public budget hearing.
So moved, Janine.
And Rich, seconds. Okay. Take a motion on this. Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, five to zero. We are in the public hearing. Now, somebody has to remind me to close this at the end of this. Mr. Connolly, turn it over to you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Buckley, this is Michael Connolly. So, I'm going to present a, what, a 10 or 15 minute presentation. It gives a high level overview of where the F112 school budget stands because similarly to the start and end time conversations, the budget has been presented on a few different occasions already this year. And we had a budget webinar and so forth recently. So, I'm going to do a few slides that sort of summarizes the budget and that we presented and recommended during the Mark meeting. And then at the end, I'm going to discuss some of the recommendations that the administration is making to talk to me this evening to try to bring the budget within balance with two towns revenue plans and then open it up for discussion and questions. So, I just want to start by talking about the major budget drivers of the fiscal year 22 school budget. It's not really a huge surprise that the first major budget driver would be our contractual obligations. Certainly in a school budget, salaries make up the largest piece of the pie at about 83.7%. So, with these contractual salary obligations with our professional staff, support staff are always going to be a huge driver of our budget requests. The second is our operational fixed costs. Those costs certainly have cost of living adjustments and inflationary increases from year to year. These are the costs to run our five campuses, certainly operate the utilities, the building and maintenance contracts, the grounds contracts, certainly fixing operating operations and services. All of these certainly tend to go up from year to year and certainly a driver of the school budget. The third driver is what is known as a strategic plan document, which is called NRPS 2025. So, these are the new initiatives, the new requests, new staff in possession, new expense adoption and so forth that are related to our strategic plan. I'm going to highlight some of those a little bit later in the presentation, but we do have some, some positions we're looking to be funded guided by our strategic plan document. And then certainly COVID-19 needs. So, certainly the pandemic that we've all gone through over the last year has created some additional needs that are not going to be ending at the end of June, that we feel will be continuing from a technology standpoint, cleaning standpoint, from a health and safety standpoint. So, that's certainly a driver of this budget as well. I'm going to highlight those a little bit later in the presentation. And then the fourth budget is just our special education costs, both in district and out of district. So, special education costs make up about 24 to 25% of our general funds request in the budget. And certainly, we all certainly know that the in district, the in district as well as the out of district cost to educate students outside the district is certainly a piece of the pie that is, that continues to be variable and changes frequently. So, that's sort of a more challenging part of putting the end of the school budget each year. So, these are certainly the four major budget drivers. Then I want to just kind of get into the numbers and see how our original fiscal year 22 budget recommended request compares to fiscal 21 in these five major budget categories. I think by looking at the chart, you can certainly get a sense of the budget drivers I just described certainly at play. You have our salaries, which is a combination of our contractual obligations as well as some of the new initiatives resulting from COVID and our strategic plan. You see that increase from fiscal 22 compared to fiscal 21. You have our instructional expenses going up and what's really driving that, that need is expenses related to, to the COVID-19 pandemic for technology and devices, instructional software. So, there's certainly a need to increase that line item. Operations and maintenance, need to continue to support our building. What's also driving this increase is again, is needs around the COVID-19 pandemic and to increase lines for health and safety for PPE as well as sanitation supplies and so forth, there's a need to increase there. And then you have our transportation, both regular and special education, as well as our, our out of district tuition budget, which is actually going down because we're actually anticipating having less students being educated outside the district next year than we have this year. So, that is a reduction there as well. And we're going to be talking about the transportation line item in more detail. And that increase was originally reflected there because at the time we recommended the budget in late February, early March, we had just kind of screwed up the contract, but we now know what our contract's going to be and we're making a change in vendors from North Reading Transportation to North Suburbans. So, there's actually a reduction in our daily rate of our original 10 bucks that sort of this line can actually be adjusted and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. But overall, we were recommending a budget of $34,352,117, which is about a 1.4 more than $1.79 increase over fiscal 21, which is a 5.4% increase. So, these next two pie charts, I'm just going to show and just give the public an sense of how we're spending the funds, how we're allocating the 34 plus million dollar request. So, as I said earlier, it's very common that any school municipal budget that salaries is going to make up over 83.7% of the pie and that certainly is the case here. And that's been very consistent over the last number of years. The remaining 16.3% of the cost made up of expenses. And I think this, what this pie chart shows is the majority of these expenses are relatively fixed costs and things that we have to adjust the budget for inflationary increases year to year. So, you see our contracted services, our utilities, transportation, out of district tuition costs. These all add up to about 13% of the pie and they're really sort of fixed. We really don't have much control. We have to justify it from a year-to-year basis. So, the remaining about 3% is really the amount that I would refer to as discretionary spending. And it's really a small piece of the overall pie of 34 plus million dollar requests. We're really talking about 900 to a million, a million dollars remaining. And that is for the materials, the supplies, the professional development that we have to educate students across the district. This next pie chart just gives you the same allocation, but a little bit of a different category highlighted. So, certainly we always want to see the instructional services be the highest piece of the pie of how we're spending our funds. That, those are the expenses for, again, classroom materials, classroom teachers, parent professionals, certainly professional and support staff working directly in our classrooms, directly with our students, materials, technology, supplies, everything that's directly related to the education and the instructional services of our students. So, that, that certainly is going to be the largest piece of the pie. I will highlight that the administrative cost of 3.3%. I think we've been doing a fairly good job controlling some of these administrative costs and operational maintenance costs. And we're actually below state averages in these areas. Administration costs across the state run at about 4%. We're just under that. And operations and maintenance have typically run between 11 and 12% when you look at these state averages in these categories that the DESI certainly tracks through their chart, you know, chart of cost. So, certainly doing a good job controlling our operational costs and our administrative costs. And certainly tuition and student services, you know, some of the extracurricular and athletics and so forth makes up the other piece of the pie. So, now we get into kind of the priority staffing positions that we're recommending, the, in some cases, carry forward that we fiscal 22 and some of the new initiatives that we're requesting that are guided by our strategic plan, but also have sort of that COVID-19 focus to address the needs that were certainly heightened and enhanced through the COVID-19 environment and challenges that we have faced this year. So, this first table are all positions that we added this year, many of which we are using federal funding through some of the elementary and secondary emergency school relief funding that we received with the Department of Education. But certainly we added a Florida school nurse, which has been instrumental in assisting with all the health services across the district and all the schools working district-wide, working with food testing, working with project tracing. Certainly very much see the need for this position next year. We added a Florida custodial position that has certainly been assisting across the district at various times at every school to assist with a variety of functions that are now spread out in, in different areas of the building and assisting with touch point cleaning. It's been instrumental to have this additional custodial member and we see that being very much a need for next year. And we also added 1.5 FTE to employees, data technicians this year. We kind of revived this role in the district and this has been instrumental with the increase of, in the ramp up of our one-to-one, the Chromebook Student Device Program, which went from seven through 12 to now kindergarten through 12. So, suddenly we had twice the number of devices we were supporting and it was always instrumental to make sure students as well as teachers and staff had working computers and Chromebook devices. So, these technicians have been instrumental. It's going to certainly be a need for that next year as well. So, now we get into sort of this ASR funding, the elementary, secondary, school, emergency relief funding. That's what that stands for. The all-school districts across the Commonwealth, administered through the federal government down through the Board of Education, have been receiving what is known as ASR funding. ASR1 funding is being used this year to fund the school nurse position highlighted on the top of this table. And then we know that we have ASR2, and I'm going to get into ASR3 a little bit later, funding coming. So, this, this idea that we use about 50% of ASR2 funding, I'll get into some changes to that approach a little bit later now that we know we have another allotment coming next year as well. But this, these emergency relief funding that's coming is really geared towards expenses related to COVID-19, but certainly all these expenses qualify. And we want to be strategic in how we spend these fundings so we don't sort of avoid that funding cliff and spend too much in one year and then you have a situation where you have to kind of adjust and move funding too much over into the general fund and impact services and put that sort of hardship on that appropriating question year to year. So, we're going to try to be strategic about how we use that funding. And then the second table here is the new initiative that has been part of our strategic plan, continuing to be part of our strategic plan and has really just been kind of reprioritized in, in certainly the focus of these positions have been heightened, really a result of issues related to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's no secret that the social, emotional, mental health needs of students as they all return to school this week and this past month is certainly a high level of focus, certainly by state and by the school district. And we want to make sure as we move forward into next school year and have all students here for in-person learning, that we have the support systems necessary at both levels, the elementary and secondary level. In reality, these are positions that have been in our strategic plan and we just have not been able to get them fully funded and they're really at the top of the list with everything going on next, next school year. But they would certainly provide the support system there for students at every level. Our next position is the educational data specialist position. It's sort of a position that we at one point had in the budget that was reduced a couple of years ago. We were sort of trying to restore this position, but change it a little bit in terms of the duties of the position, make it less of sort of a data coordinator dealing with managing our data and our information student system and certainly working more as sort of an instructional coach, working more with our classroom teachers to analyze data and help them make better data-informed decisions. So, it would certainly be working with curriculum leaders across the district and classroom teachers and getting into the classroom to help all, all classroom teachers and curriculum leaders make better, better informed decisions of the data that we have available at our school. So, three very important positions. But, you know, we really saw this as a very modest request, so sort of new enhancements, new initiatives in our total budget request. We're looking at 200, a little over 205,000, which is about 0.6% of our total 5.4% budget request, which is guided to a new initiative. So, just in summary now, we have, this is our total budget request, as I mentioned earlier. It's $34,352,117, with a $1.7 million increase over fiscal 19 and the general funds. But as we all know, it isn't a terrible story. We have our grants, we have our revolving funds. I'll kind of get into those details tonight. I will say there's a lot of information on the website for any members of the community or parents that really want to know more about what grants we're receiving, where does some of the funding go for user fees and tuitions that our staff were bussing and athletics and extracurricular and forming arts, as well as the full day kindergarten prepaid tuition program. So, we are recommending, there's videos out there online that have been made that speak in detail about what these funds are spent for. But in reality, the general fund appropriation is a little more than 34 million, but we know there's at least another, you know, 3.2 million additional of funding that make, that go into the full equation of how we fund education at North Reading. And then we certainly receive a very generous gift and donations from private donors, from our booster and parent support groups annually, about 250,000. And then the CTO and GTA's in-time gifts in their annual budgets to support enrichment programs and classroom supplies and class field trips, speakers and so forth, make up about an annual average of an additional 75,000. So, a lot goes into the overall North Reading educational experience and funding formula more than just what we ask the town to support through the annual town meeting. So, that's kind of summarizing the overview of the fiscal 22 budgets. Now I want to spend the next, you know, 10 to 15 minutes talking about where we kind of go from here and some of the changes that the administration has. kind of go from here and some of the changes that the administration has recommended to this committee this evening. So based on the latest revenue plan by members of the finance planning team met on April sixth, we are looking at a budget gap based on the available funding of that most up-to-date revenue plan of four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Now, we think it's good indication that there's some revenue numbers that have to be true enough and changed that I think is fair that it's going to probably release another seventeen-thousand dollars to the school department, but we think this number in reality is probably more like four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but this is what we have today, and that might probably going to change toward the end of the week. So we had our school committee budget workshop on Monday, and I just want to share the list that was discussed and presented at this meeting publicly. So if you were here earlier in the meeting, you would have heard the starting end-time discussion and discussing around transportation and the need to add two additional buses to the fleet of current ten buses that we've had in North Reading for a number of years. Based on the award contract to North Suburban, the cost per bus is going to be sixty-five-thousand dollars per bus. So to do that and to meet better meet the needs of all students that desire a bus pass, this would be a cost of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, and that would align the elementary schools that we just talked about on the same start end-time as well as the secondary level and middle school and high school. So that's a change, so that's an increase or what we proposed. I mentioned earlier the driver of special education cost called in and out of district. I've mentioned how that's always a challenge in the budget, it's always can be very volatile, it can change very frequently, and we feel it's important that we want to meet the needs of all students, whether they need to be, to meet those needs that education needs to be outside the district or inside, so this is a change. We know we need to increase the our district tuition line item by this amount based on the most current information. Now, these are some of our recommended changes. I mentioned earlier that we got some favorable news once the budget went out based on the bid that was submitted for bus transportation for next year. So we know we can reduce this transportation line by thirty-two-thousand-seven-hundred, so based on the original ten buses and the original recommendation, that cost can be reduced by thirty-two-thousand-seven-hundred as we're adding two buses based on the line items above. These next few lines, I mentioned that the COVID-19 pandemic definitely resulted in needs for technology devices, software increases. So much of those increases in the instructional services cost center was driven by our technology needs in this area, and we feel confident at this point that without resulting in any impact to the education in these areas, we can make a recommendation to reduce these line items, the increased amount, again, one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, because we feel very confident at this point that we're going to have the capital funding through the CIBC process to support the one-to-one program and devices that we need for next year, to ensure that all students in kindergarten to grade twelve have a very workable, quality computers device. And we also feel confident that we have the funding available in some cases this year to do the appropriate renewals of some of the instructional software lines that were added this year that we want to continue next year, that's become very much a part of what we do each and every day for that curriculum, so without increasing the budget next year. So we feel like a very low impact, there's no impact to make this adjustment. The other thing I talked about, looking at the health and sanitation and the operations maintenance, this was a driver, was that we had to make some increases to the custodial supply lines and the health supply lines for proper PPE and proper sanitation disinfectant solutions. So we actually feel like we have, during the budget in the final quarter of our fiscal twenty-one budget, and we feel like we're in a position where we can get some appropriate expenditures this year and put ourselves in good standing, where we'll have the supplies we need to turn to and not impact that operation into next year. So we feel like with almost no impact, we can make this line item reduction. These next two areas is to staffing reductions that we'd be recommending. We booked at some certain programs in certain areas, and this is a program that, based on some lower enrollments, we feel that we can make a point-five FTE reduction to an academic position and save on that FTE savings and not have a significant impact on enrollment and the offerings that we've offered at the elementary level. This is one of the new initiatives, so we certainly did not want to kind of go to this area, but we felt if we had to take a position, a new position or a new initiative off the recommendation, this would probably be the lower priority position that we felt like we could recommend. Certainly, the school adjustment counselors at the elementary, secondary level, we feel are very much needed, and we didn't want to kind of turn there, but we have to take one position off of those two tables that I said earlier, this would be the lowest that we talk about, impact to the education environment as well as the social and emotional needs of students. And then this next line, and just again, I refer to it as system-wide discretionary expense line, so there's several lines on the operations and system-wide area, administrative area, that we feel like if we had to, we would tend to look at, make some, get a little bit more risky, make some assumptions, and reduce some line items in certain areas. What I'm not referring to here is one that I declared is would not impact the school instructional lines or classroom supplies, material, textbooks, technology. It's more the system-wide, looking at our unemployment insurance line, looking at our liability insurance line, looking at our legal services line, our auditing expense line, and seeing where we can kind of shave off a couple of values here and there to come up with a number. I mentioned earlier that we're fairly confident that there's going to be additional seventeen-thousand dollars once that revenue plan is trued up by the town, and this is an area that we, just to make it a little bit easier or a little bit less harmful, we could reduce once that seventeen-thousand gets kind of funded through that trued-up revenue plan. This next area is an area that we had much discussion about at the school committee budget workshop, and this is the use of this emergency elementary and secondary relief funding that I spoke of earlier. And you may have, an earlier slide showed that the original budget had, we would use fifty percent of our ASR two funding that is really available in fiscal twenty-two, in fiscal twenty-two, and into the first quarter of fiscal twenty-three. What's happened since we presented the budget in March is we now know that there's going to be an ASR three allotment coming down through the federal government, administered through the State Board of Education. Even though that amount has not been officially released yet, we've gotten very great information that we're going to have, that allotment's going to be about two-point-two times the amount of our ASR two. So we're trying to, again, be very fiscally sound and prudent with our expenditure of these funds, knowing that they're really intended to be spent over almost a three-fiscal-year period. The ASR three funds will be available well into fiscal year twenty-four, so that, you have, obviously, we're putting together fiscal twenty-two budget for next year, and you have twenty-three to twenty-four. So again, trying to avoid that funding cliff, looking at the need, knowing that these positions are probably not going to go away in the near future. Certainly, the school adjustment counseling positions that we're recommending, as well as the parental positions, the school nurse and the technology positions, really much and very much a parent to what we do. So we want to be fiscally sound and avoid sort of a funding cliff in a year or two now and create a hardship on a future appropriated request in subsequent fiscal year budget. So we are taking a prudent fiscal approach to, right now, recommend thirty-three percent of the total allocation in the aggregate of ASR two and ASR three. So what that means is, if you look at the one-hundred-and-five-thousand, I showed on the earlier slide, this would add an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars on top of that to make the recommended offset in this area for next year, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. Now, we know we have about six-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand available through ASR two and three, so this is about thirty-three percent of that total. So if we're using one-third, and the idea that we got through the budget subcommittee in the school committee budget workshop on Monday afternoon of this week, that we really wanted to make sure this funding is there to support these very much needed expenses, to help with the loss of learning, to help with the social and mental needs of students, and to ensure a very healthy and safe environment with additional school nurses and custodians is there for the next three years. So this is the approach we've taken. So all in all, the recommended changes with the increases needed in the operations and maintenance line items as well as special education costs that are in these recommended increases this evening, would reduce the budget allotment, the original allotment, by two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, which would leave a remaining budget gap of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars that would be worked up over the next few weeks. So we, again, we started from four-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, one-forty-six. We identified two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, one-forty-six based on this recommendation, and the amount that would remain is one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand.
Michael?
Yeah, two quick things.
One, I actually think the total's two-seventy-seven, one-forty-six. Let me just look at that one. But the thing I want to point out is, we've cut everything down to the budget that we wanted. The only thing that is off is we added the out-of-district placement and the bus transportation. And that's basically where we're short right now. And so, you know, I think we've done a great job trying to identify where we can cut, and so we just, again, it's just pointing out that there's more to cut still, but at the end of the day, it, you know, at the end of the day, we've, you know, we've kind of done what we were supposed to do originally, and now we, you know, are making that decision for school start times, and that's literally what we're still short, so.
Right. I got it, I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at that.
But I appreciate where you've caught in, when we said this in the workshop, just for the public, I'll say, I think it's been a lot of, we're putting this together and identifying these positions, and I agree with all the thoughts on this, I agree with doing what we can from this year to avoid having it next year, I agree with, you know, being conservative on the ESASR fund, so it's just kind of, I agree with the approach that you've taken, you took in all of this, so thank you.
Great, I appreciate that. So I think where would that leave us? I mean, I think it still would leave us with, you know, a fiscal year budget that certainly would meet the contractual obligations with employees and employee union, so that contractual salary piece is something, a fixed area that we certainly have to do, so it would allow us to accomplish that. It would allow us to meet all those fixed operational costs or contractual services for the proper upkeep and maintenance of buildings, that utility, utility line items, the bussing situation that we've discussed, it would allow us to meet those needs operationally to achieve some value-added enhancements through scheduling in a lot of other areas. It would allow us to maintain some of the staff we added for the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as add staff, to be able to meet some student-teacher ratios, especially at the elementary level, we wouldn't be going over any kind of guideline at the elementary level, we'd have some student-teacher ratios and high sizes. We've made the operational instructional technology needs of the district, both from a student device and equipment standpoint, as well as having those technicians and maintaining that digital learning staff that's been so important under the direction of Director Dan Down. We've maintained the health and safety services for all students by having the appropriate line items in those defense budgets, but as also having an additional school nurse and additional custodian, and we really feel like that's essential. And we really would address the social, emotional, and mental health needs of all our students through a variety of background areas, but we would also, certainly those school adjustment counselors are a big factor here, we would work to have those support systems in place, and that's probably one of the highest priorities. And we would address the operational needs of all five schools, certainly everything that we do on a daily basis. The one-to-one program, page control, which certainly still exists, we'd have the sanitation expenses and technology expenses to be there, and that's certainly now we're not calling a post-COVID-19 environment, or the environment that we see continuing. And we would continue to have those preventative maintenance and operational contracts in place to really maintain the proper upkeep of all five schools and four campuses that we've done a really special job of over the last number of years, we want to continue that. So I think, you know, it's not a super fancy budget, not a lot happening, but I think it's still, in a small way, we're still achieving a lot, you know, despite some of the reductions we had to recommend today. Where do we go from here? So obviously, there's still work to do, to be done by about one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar remaining deficit, that we'll have to work with the finance planning team, I'll be meeting tomorrow morning. We'll certainly be meeting again this month as we approach the first week of May, with the decision to be officially voted and adopted for the town meeting warrant. And I would say, I think we're confident we can figure it out, and we're all hopeful that we won't have to go any deeper than what we presented this evening, but there's some work involved in that, and I really think with the relationships we've established on that finance planning team, through the chair and Mike's chair of this committee, with Trot and Rich and Dr. Daley, certainly Michael Roberto, Liz' work, and flexible amendments, finance committee members, I think we're going to work hard to put our heads together to solve this that we've always thought about, but there's work to do before we get there. But the school committee vote, I believe, is officially going to be made third now. We're going to present the budget to the finance committee on May fifth, town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, June fifth. Continue to await a budget action, so I, there's one thing on that, I'm definitely cheering that the House is increasing the chapter seventy audit based on the governor's budget, so that is good news. Whether we get confident enough that that's going to work its way through the House with the means, and so forth, to get efficient funding, but I don't think we'll see huge increases there, but I know the governor was very conservative in funding chapter seventy, minimum eight increases at thirty dollars per pupil, so I believe with the House member, I would expect that to be funded at about fifty dollars per pupil, which won't be a lot for us, but it might be thirty thousand that would help in this equation. So we'll wait, we'll wait to see what happens there, and then continue to discuss the budget. So if that is enough, do you have questions in terms of this?
I got one, any comments, questions?
I have a question. So there's been a lot of evolving understanding of...
What did you do, Janine?
Questioning.
Understanding of how COVID transmits and we're going to understand that our original understandable fears of surfaces and whatnot are maybe less important or less critical than we thought. Has that changed? I don't know if any guidance has changed, but I don't know if that's changed our thinking in terms of how much we need to be spending on cleaning going forward.
Yeah, it's a great question. So it certainly has changed, a lot transpired, and we've certainly learned a significant amount over the last year about how the virus works, how the virus transmits, what happens when on surfaces, what's the appropriate way to disinfect, and I would say I would run with a caution right now, we continue to operate the narrowly, coming back in September when we reopen the building for the first time, we are touch-point cleaning daily. We are recommending a hand-pain tiring frequently, and we have those hand-pain tiring stations at all schools, and we are disinfecting and touch-point cleaning each evening. I think as we look at the virus in the science and what's transpired, I think we will be looking, taking a close look at that as we approach next school year. And I think that, I think it is going to look a little bit different, and we're going to certainly make sure it stays and healthy, and support through the proper guidelines and the best practices that's out there in the industry, but I think it certainly can look, it's going to look a little bit different, for sure. And there will be some areas of expenses that we know that will not need to be there to stay up. And I don't know the adjustments I will say that we made tonight and assumptions does put that, does build that into, okay, that assertion into effect.
Does Amber have any comments or questions?
Slightly, well, it's still on topic, but it's more directed towards Mr. Green. Just wondering what your thoughts was on this whole process, sitting from where you're sitting now, like to go as the principal.
The budget process?
Yeah.
You know, we're, building administrators are involved in every step of the way, that process is pretty familiar. That process is pretty familiar.
Yeah.
It's been an interesting year watching just the way that the funds had to be spent to open schools safely, where we are, and watching how the federal government has been putting more money through the state and then having a little bit of room to give us a brief sense of some of those eventual impacts, like the extra nurse, as this line says, some of the stuff that we need to help keep facilities. The process is developed, I felt pretty comfortable with. I'll be pretty involved in the routine, making stuff that's part of A C.
So is it any different looking at it from?
Big picture?
From, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm not as tuned in that, you know, as far as what staff or what issues would have been put to my building versus the big picture. But even that, I always said one of the things that I enjoyed the most about working in North Reading is the fact that when we are in this type of climate or a difficult time, we work together to make the best decisions for our students. So it hasn't been more stressful or challenging.
Just curious, though. Michael, thank you as always for being, you know, so good at what you do.
About the facility?
No, not this time.
That was. And I'll, and I'll just thank Michael again for all the work. Kind of Mr. Clean was saying it would be nice if we got better funding from the federal and the state government every year, and not just, you know, when pandemics hit, but.
Would also be nice if we knew what the funding was that we're making our budget to.
That would be good, too. But, yeah, I mean, and, again, it's challenging when, you know, fixed costs go up more than the, you know, than, than the, than the revenues do sometimes. I also, you know, would call, I'd say, if you could just comment on here as well, I see, I've been following special education funding for a while here, and, you know, it's nice to see reduction in some of, some of the expenses, and, you know, we always have to educate our, all of our students, but it's nice that, you know, we are able to do more and more of that in, within North Reading, you know, district, and so appreciate that, and it's definitely a nice way to save a little bit of money if we can as well here and there. But that's about all I have. So thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we don't have a vote yet, we're not balanced yet, but.
We do need to move on to the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. We have a motion, thank you, right?
I move that we, uh, close the public hearing.
Oh, second.
Okay, first by Rich, and second by Janine. We'll do a vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, Rich. Okay, moving on. Policy.
Did you say this is the most important part of the meeting?
Correct. It only gets more exciting from here, so if people want to drop off, we can pull you in the stand. Policy Subcommittee, who would like to present on this one?
I'll, I'll take this one. In, in this edition of Policy Subcommittee, we're on our second reading of Policy A E A V Holidays, where we have added Juneteenth, fixed a couple of Tedos, and ordered them to be chronological from the start of year, not the start of school year. I believe those are all of the, and change the language at the beginning, just to better reflect what's going on. And that's, that's the change.
Cool. You have a motion?
Uh, you know, scroll down to it.
We can keep it the way it was last.
Huh?
I was just going to say we can keep it the way it was last time for spending.
So I move to approve the second reading of revised policy A E A V, and to keep track changes as the one eighty is in the document.
Alsta.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Vote, Chris?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass to side zero, thank you, Policy Subcommittee.
That might be my favorite poll.
There we go. So, routine matters, minutes. This is Ingraham.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the minutes of the March twenty-second open session as written.
And I will second this.
Chris? Okay, is there any discussion, any errors?
I didn't see anything.
Okay, we'll vote on that. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass to side zero, thank you. Budget update. Any other updates on this year's budget?
Mike? No, so we still listen to the last meeting, and it's kind of a big trending, this is Janine, uh, this is why I saw, we've got more tower update at this, at the next meeting, but I consider it, it seems to be in kind of solid fiscal standing. The final quarter of the year will really focus on preparing for the closeout and going through that process, but nothing's changed.
Well, thanks, sir. Any staffing update? Dr. Daley?
Yes, I have a few just to share with you since the last time we reported since mid-January. Wendy Mudi is food service associate at the Bachelor School. Little School Molly Sullivan is a long-term substitute for special education for Maria Sully. Erin Sanderson, long-term substitute special education teacher for Briny Joyce at the little school. The middle school, we have Diana Colacella, long-term sub administrative assistant for Janice Martin. Taylor Murphy, a long-term substitute educational parent for Nicole Saltzman. And Arina Oliya, at a long-term substitute teacher for Laura Olivetta, who is serving as the interim assistant principal of the middle school. At the high school, Kelsey Cofflin, a long-term substitute guidance counselor for Ashley Atora, she's in till the end of the year.
Very much, welcome to all of us, Dan. The donations, Mr. McGowan?
I was looking down on two or three here today. So I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of school furniture moving service valued at fifteen hundred dollars from Dan Marco, owner of Sterling Corporation, benefits the North Reading High School.
I second, this is Chris.
And what was, was that for the reopening?
It was, it was to, to help us move furniture desks back into classrooms. I don't know, Michael, if you want to share more?
Yeah, so this is, um, you know, we're a company that really helps us, you know, that, that's off, the, the owner actually lives in, in North Reading, of the company, and he, we had reached out through a couple of companies and required about giving support to do this, to ensure the furniture. And then we, and then he, he really wanted to help the community, and he offered to do this service in kind for, for free, and it was a huge help. They spent, Mr. LaPrat, and even I, he spent a few days working with the custodial team here, and they, they did a great job. We, we definitely greatly appreciate their, their services. And he's offered to continue to kind of be there if we need it in future, as all of the town, we ever need to borrow a, a U-Haul or a truck or anything, and he, he's offered his services, so it's been a great, great connection, and, you know, we hope to have your relationship going forward. Great.
Wonderful, here. Thank you. Okay, so we'll vote on the motion. So Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one hundred dollars from Deborah Hayes, benefits trap program with the North Reading High School.
I second.
Any discussion on this one? Vote, Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Sure, I'm just getting aye.
I'm an aye as well. You?
We're all feeling the joke. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of N ninety-five, valued at one thousand dollars, Veterans Business Supply, to benefit the North Reading public.
I second.
Discussion on this one? Hi, thank you, Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, five zero, thank you very much. Subcommittee update, finance planning team met on April sixth. Mr. McGowan, you'll report on it?
Well, we've seen the sort of results of, uh, to, to, tonight, and how it affects our efforts. Other than that, I mean, I think there's still a lot of discussion about this year's revenue versus projections of next, of next couple of years. You never lose sight of the fact that we're also thinking two years, a year or two in advance. But, you know, I think there's some things that still, still kind of work through, or what are we actually going to include in the revenue division?
Thank you. Any challenges? How to use the funds that the town and the school are getting? How to continue to balance a budget when expenses go up more than revenues go up? But.
And how to handle short-term revenue sources, not just the government, not just the relief money, but there are some other sources of revenue that we know aren't going to be around forever, and what's the best way to, to?
But it's been a cordial group and a flight group, and.
For sure.
We all, we all realize we're pulling in the same direction, so that is nice. Any other Subcommittee meetings? I miss?
I just.
Subcommittee schedule, finance planning team, we're meeting tomorrow morning? Is that?
No.
Yeah, I, I, I'll be from, I'll be from tomorrow.
I'll be from tomorrow.
Yeah.
There wasn't, there was a meeting for that's going to be planned, there may be one other meeting in between, we'll try to set.
Right. We're meeting at some point.
A meeting at campus.
Empire Subcommittee, meeting on March, May, May nineteenth at one P M. Finance Subcommittee meeting again, May nineteenth at three thirty P M. Administrative report, Dr. Daley?
So I believe I covered a lot of this earlier this evening, but one piece that I wanted to add, in addition to Mr. LaPrat's award, and our Massachusetts Partnership for Youth Concepts winners, Cambridge Science Festival winners, is that we received a food services grant that was for eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars?
Yeah. Oh, I remember that.
We helped this out into the system today. Michael, if you wanted to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I agree. After several attempts to receive from food service assistance grants in a variety of ways, we did apply for an opportunity for food service equipment assistance grant. Really being towards purchasing equipment that can assist through, I don't know, all the alternative ways that schools have had to kind of change the way they do their food service program, and, and equipment to kind of assist in that manner. And we were, one of them, only about, I think, I want to say like twenty districts that received funding very competitive, and the eleven thousand three fifty-one will help us purchase a new stealer machine to help us package and seal food, as well a new steamer for the high school and middle school kitchen. So we're certainly excited to be able to properly prepare that, that, those pieces of equipment to help the food service operation through this, uh, federal funding source. It was great news to receive that, to speak.
And I, 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 I related, Joe, I assume that we'll hopefully have some more meals served when all the students are back now?
Yeah, yeah. So we're watching that, that closely, that makes, that includes solid participation. Believe it or not, the month, the month of March, we, we closed out the month of March recently, and food service program actually earned a very small profit in the month of March. And that was the first profitable month we've had this school year, and, and it was just great news, the, the, the March numbers were really high, and they did a really good job with the Graco program, and the, the after-school snack program that we created, helping generate an extra revenue, reimbursement revenue, so that was great to see, that was the first good trend milestone for that this year, so we hope that continues, you know, April, June. I think it will with the students coming back as well.
I, I make my kids fake it on the Wednesday half-day, and they always complain about it. You're helping your school, kid.
I, I, I think we should say again what a great job the food service team has done this year, and last, between last year and this year.
Yeah.
Pretty important.
Anything else, administrative report, Dr. Daley?
Not at this.
For correspondence, do you have any? I, I have correspondence.
I passed out some mail tonight, but there was.
So I think, I think everybody in the school committee got emailed by Dallas, the head of the trustees of trust funds. Do you guys all get those emails?
Yes.
So they were just giving us updates on two, on two accounts, there's a recreational equipment account for the Bachelor School, and a Walter S. Flint School Fund. So we have to give them notice if we want to use any of these funds this year. I mean, the one, the recreational equipment has a balance of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in it right now, and the Walter S. Flint School Fund has a balance of, well, the expendable amount is four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven ninety-one, and the principal is ten thousand in there. So I don't know if, I, I don't, I don't know that we're using that to balance the budget yet right now. I don't know if there's a thought on that, but we got that, and then we got notification about two scholarship awards that the North Reading School Committee can give, each two hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm going to hand these to Dr. Daley and hope that he knows what we should do with these. But I don't know how, I don't know how we, how we decide on the award winners, but I'm sure Dr. Daley can give us guidance, a teacher meeting on that.
Absolutely. I have to know where we just will credit as well.
Please come up before? There's, there's an annual group name, I do.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Correct. Like a few years ago, the trustees came in and said from, oh, we've had this for years growing, and no one knew about it, no one ever told us about it.
Yeah.
That was one of the meetings, yeah. It was just like, well, somebody, because people were just randomly sitting in a room, and they were like, oh, yeah, we've just found money that we can have if we want.
That was a really nice meeting.
More, we need more of those meetings. Okay, for future business, oh, the only other thing I'll mention is, I think Mr. McGowan and I both were, attended the Pluckworth meeting on Monday night, and, and I think, like, we, they talked about the warrant that the school committee is proposing. Would have been nice if I could actually speak to both of them. I spoke to one of them, I think, pretty well, and the other one, not so well, so Mr. Connolly, you maybe asked about it at the finance planning team meetings, and I didn't do a great job of.
Kind of blanked them.
Of explaining the, the second warrant that we have about the revolving fund.
Yeah, we actually, I actually talked to Michael Roberto about that.
Okay. Was it for solar only, or was it for like, you know, the amazing?
That was created specifically for the solar, it was connected to the solar program.
Okay.
To separate the, at the time, we had, had a vision, the, the rental, the lease rental payments, uh, not to kind of bundle that with the facility rental that's already in existence.
Okay.
So, um, we gave that information recently this week, I think he understands it, more of an administrative kind of cleanup process. Uh, we told him we're probably a couple of years away, maybe we may end use at this point, but we're continuing to explore it. But I think, I think he's cleared out what, what that was.
It's not at all impactful, it's just a, as you say, administrative.
Right. And, and, and for what it's worth, I think the feeling from the select board was some support for the trust, for the revolving account and, and funding a little bit more, and Mr. Leary pointed, you know, said that we should probably have a number we want to get to and figure out about, figure out an annual amount to put in, whether it's, you know, fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand a year, and, you know, try to have that as a standing agenda. Agenda item or warrant item, and the warrant, warrant article until he reached that amount, so.
Yeah, okay.
Again, there was, there wasn't a vote taken on it, but it was just informal discussion, I think there was some support there.
And then we started with a hundred, and we're putting in another hundred?
We started with a hundred, and we haven't, we haven't decided the amount.
But, but the current, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't decided, we're going to talk about finance planning team meeting about it, but. We had kind of been discussing fifty or a hundred, so.
I think we do a hundred this year, and then fifty annually until we get up to five hundred.
Yeah, yeah. We, we didn't do it last year, and so I, I would agree with the hundred number of the request, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, something we'll talk about there. Okay, that was just another reporting, although, um, future business, Monday, May third, we're going to have a meeting, and the Bachelor School presentation will be done. Monday, May seventeenth, well, the school committee meeting, and it's going to be the reorganization, so I guess we have an election in that, so good luck to our two candidates. I, I, my money's on you guys winning, but the.
We take odds of who gets more votes. We take odds that we get more votes.
May seventeenth, um, school committee meeting will be the little school presentation and the school reorganization, school committee reorganization. Uh, June fifth is town meeting, June tenth is another school committee meeting with the C-Tech presentation and elementary school improvement plan, and Monday, June twenty-first, yeah, is high school, middle school improvement plan, six-thirty, and then we should probably, have we set our meeting for the Sunday yet, or not?
Uh, eating, yeah. No. No, we have not.
So I, I just wanted to bring us up to the end of the school year, this is Dr. Daley.
Yeah.
You know, the one, we had the Monday, Thursday, so I wanted to establish some of these dates for us, I think that, you know, I've heard from many people involved about the preference. The one, we, I think last year we had scheduled back-to-back meetings, and I had copied that calendar forward, but when Mr. Connolly and I looked at this, we felt that having, that the break, the typical two weeks in between the May third and the May seventeenth made